So this is our Monday afternoon.
Oh, no.
Work session.
Oh, it's going to be.
New technologies. For recording, we'll go around for introductions. It's good to see everybody here today. Thanks for joining us. We'll have a presentation and as I say, we switched gears from our history in the past of just being able to be socially just for the recording, being able to have remotely accessible. So that's what we're doing here. So yeah, Nick, we'll go around.
Great. I think we like Deschutes County Administrator. Lee Randall, Deschutes County Facilities Director.
Alicia Harriet, Circuit Court Judge.
Randy Miller, Circuit Court Judge.
Allison Emerson, Circuit Court Judge.
Patty Derr, Deschutes County Commissioner.
Glacia Socorro, Circuit Court Judge.
And I'm going to go on commissioners. There's like three commissioners here today, so be good to us.
Hi.
Well, it's Ashby, Pretending Judge.
Megan Flynn, Chief Justice.
Nancy Cozine, State Court Administrator.
Milk Chang, Deschutes County Commissioner.
Ray Cressley, Circuit Court Judge.
Michelle McKeever, Circuit Court Judge.
Pat Bagley, Circuit Court Judge.
Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator.
Tara Croft, Deputy County Administrator.
Kim Rayly, Assistant Legal Counsel.
Dan Doyle, this Blatchface County Council. Blatchface is from the dermatologist. I was not in a war fight. You may have all heard. I have been in a war fight.
Yeah.
I did a war fight.
Andy Curtis, Falcone Administrator for Circuit Court. And Judge Clinton had a hearing.
Oh, yeah. About all of them here. Well, as I say, thank you very much for joining us, a little bit of relationship building, a little bit of status and what's going on. So thanks for joining us. That are building here. Maybe about two years from now, we've completed a building, a new building.
That would be very nice. We look forward to that. We really appreciate the patience of our two newest judges who move around every day and have, I was in Judge Harris' office the other day and it was maybe triple digits. It was a little warm. So they've been fantastic and we really appreciate what the county is doing to support the, you know, the courthouse expansion. Of course, the county's grown tremendously and this will really help the county deliver justice moving forward for decades. So thank you.
So yeah, with that, Lee Randall, facilities. And he's had quite a day today, I think. So how many emails and phone calls can I get at one moment, right?
Well, thank you. Happy to be here this evening to share the status update on the courthouse expansion project. I have about 10 slides. I'll move through them fairly quickly. For those of you who have seen the floor plan and elevations previously, there aren't a lot of changes to update you on, but we'll mainly focus on the status of the project and next steps where we're heading going forward. All right. So just a quick overview of the project's scope. The goals are to increase the courtroom count for short-term and future growth, expand and consolidate for administration, improve the security screening area, improve in custody, holding and transport. Overall, it's three levels plus the basement area and 53,000 square feet plus or minus. Since, since I created this slide, that number has actually been reduced. We're closer to about 50,000 square feet. I'll just briefly walk through the floor plan about the right half of of the screen there. This area is the new expansion area. To the left, it's the current jury assembly room and area and hearing room. So this is the existing building and this portion here is the expansion. So this, the basement area shows judges secure parking and Sally works for in custody transfer. On the first floor, the expansion area again is on the right side of the screen showing mainly the administration area and public service counters. We're also including or included in the project in the existing building is a remodel of this area into a hearing room as well as additional administrators staff. And then going to a typical courtroom set on the second floor. On the right, we have the two courtrooms with judges' chambers and support areas around the outside. And then in custody, transport in the center with elevator for in custody going from the basement to currently the second floor and eventually third floor. So this is the rendering of you from the west slightly from the north and see the existing building on the left and then the proposed expansion on the right. One of the challenges that the design team faced, and I'll touch basically on the I'll touch a little bit on solution was that we have a 1940 building. We have a 1977 building. We have a 2003 expansion. And now we are in 2023 with another expansion. So early on, the design approach was to not try and meld all of those, but just kind of acknowledge these are all different areas of architecture similar to what we have in the rest of downtown Bend. Typically, as you walk up and down Bond or Wall Street, every 50 to 100 feet, there's a new era, different type of architecture. And so the, the design approach early on was just to embrace that and to do the same thing for the courthouse project. This is the view from the southwest. And there on the left, one of the, you'll see the new security screening area, neat entry. One of the challenges with the existing building was a short area for people waiting to go through screening. And so we, this will significantly increase the amount of space for folks that are in line waiting to go through and also bring them into the building at street level rather than coming up exterior steps or a ramp to get into the building. And you'll see that shortly. And then just you. And then again, from on the outside, this shows they're hard to see in the rendering, but at the lower right in, in the street level of the proposed building is where the judge's entrance will be. This is the view of Harriman Street as well as the Sally entrance. This is a rendering of the courtroom. Many of you were at the mock-up where the feedback and information that the design and construction team got was incorporated into the courtroom design that you see here. And this is that expanded screening area and the entry area at street level. One of the design features that I really like is the incorporation of timber framing into justice area. It's cost prohibitive to do on a large scale, but we wanted to find a way to bring in that Pacific Northwest look, something that harkens back to Ben's roots as a mill town and really highlight that as folks come into the, into the building as well as creating a warmer entry with the wood tones to kind of set the tone as folks come to do business. We're almost to the, to the end of the update. I'll touch briefly on where we're at in terms of project development. We're currently at the bid and permit stage there in Willow. We show that running through September, from September through March. We just had a follow-up meeting with the city today. Our planning application is nearing completion. We've, we've done an initial submittal to the city. We received comments back. We're in the process of responding to those comments. And as part of that response, we met with City of Bend Engineering today to work through some of their comments and feedback on specifically on the Harriman Street side. Just looking at some of the details related to the width of the proposed street, the improvements that we'll be doing as part of the project. So we're providing and if the meeting actually went really well, we were able to work through some of their concerns and come up with what we think is a solution. So we'll be resubmitting an additional, some additional documents with additional information probably early next week to respond to their concerns related to their street. We expect, our goal is to have a preliminary permit for demo and for site work beginning as early as the first of the year. There's still some, some things to work through. One is that this planning application has taken a little longer than we expected. And so we're experiencing some delays there. And then we're still, we're continuing to work through the A.J. Tucker building removal. The Board of Commissioners has approved our application to submit to remove the building and save the facade for potential future use. And so we're moving forward with that application. We have a draft of it that we'll be working through this week, the end of this week and early next week and looking to submit that to the city. Possibly to have our mandatory public hearing either in November or December, depending on how that application process goes. And then hopefully we'll be off and running with construction administration and looking to actually be breaking ground likely now in April with actual footing excavation and all the rest of the people that have built the building. So I believe that takes us, and I'll stop. I'm happy to answer any questions that.
We're excited to be able to put this together. It was about a $25 million estimate that slipped to 40 during these inflationary times. State legislature provided basically that $15 million number is exactly what we needed. And I'm sure there was probably some advocacy from your point of view, whatever could be done there and Commissioner there, she was very.
No, it was Judy Trigo.
Yeah.
Senator Steiner loves Judy Trigo, and that's the friend that went with me. So she smiled and said, yes, yes, yes. Polk County didn't even get $22,000. There were eight counties that didn't get a dime and everyone was like, why did Deschutes get so lucky? Judy Trigo. I'll give all the credit to her.
We'll all sign the card for it.
And our legislative delegation from the central Oregon region was also pretty important in that.
Well, and it's statewide significance, you know, being able to kind of eastern Oregon have that capacity. We have the judges now, so it's good to be able to build this building. Thank you for the professionalism of your, your lady and your group and the partners that are coming online for this too. You know, there's a lot of professional services rendered right now to put this together.
For sure. And the, you know, the county, Board of County Commissioners has always been a fine steward of the courthouse. I think that that has really helped. And we've always had excellent facilities and the county stepped up. Said, hey, we can, you know, we will fund this. I just think it really showed some leadership. I think that connected, you know, in the legislature and I do want to mention Lee, you know, we, we've been working together through the RFP, you know, process and constantly impressed by the county participants and really feel that we have the right people in the room, so to speak, to see this project through, you know, you go through that and then, you know, the county awards those contracts and then you wonder like, okay, this is the right group and I really have a lot of confidence and the ability for them to deliver a great project.
Well, their name is right across the street. So if there's a problem.
You know, it doesn't hurt. Right. Some of those renderings, what is it, Pence? That is right. So it's like, they have to look at that project every day. So.
They were, they're going to do a great job.
That's, that's.
And on behalf of the OJD as a whole, we're just really grateful for the county's partnership in this effort. Glad to see that it's close to fruition.
Hey. We're very appreciative to criminal JD and others at state level for granting us two additional judges, which that, you know, all these things feed together.
So next on the agenda, so this can go wherever we want. We've just got some time together, really talking about mental health and public safety. Two big topics, right? So, but what can we do, work together, advocate for the next things that need to happen there? I know that aid and assist and you know, measure 110 and just all kinds of variables around this. So I don't know if anybody was kind of leading the conversation on this or we're just dropping it on the table.
So I do the mental, I do the mental health court in Deschutes County and our numbers have stayed pretty steady this last year, about 45 open cases. We're up, we were up 115% shortly after measure 110 came about and we've stayed pretty steady. The law has been ever really evolving in this area with the federal case pending and Judge Mossman's orders. So it's changed some of what we can and can't do as it talks about either leaving people in the community or finding other placement for them. I think one of the things that's really missing in this analysis is something in between community placement and the Oregon State Hospital. Deschutes County only has 17 beds total at the Deschutes Recovery Center. So we're regularly getting cases that are coming through. People are recommending a secure residential treatment facility. There's no placement for them. So they're being released back into the community or they're coming back from the Oregon State Hospital as either unable to, is still unable to aid and assist, but they've timed out and there's no placement for them. So we're placing them back on community restoration. A lot of them don't even have the mental capacity to participate in community restoration. So you're trying to get them to participate with Deschutes County Behavioral Health and then ultimately you're most likely dismissing their cases because there's no engagement. So what we're kind of seeing as a pattern now is we have people who are coming back who are not restored, who are still experiencing pretty significant mental health issues. And there's really no resource, community resources and the lift that we're asking from Deschutes County Behavioral Health, who is amazing. Our Deschutes County Behavioral Health team does an amazing job because the things that we're asking them to do, not only aid and assist, but the MCAT team. We're worried that they're going to start having to put caps on the number of cases that they can even take on community restoration because we're getting to that capacity threshold. So what I'd like to see is some other intermediary, whether it's non-secure residential treatment facilities, secure residential treatment facilities, other dual diagnosis treatment facilities, because there's really nothing that's existing in the community as it relates to. So aid and assist deals with the people who are in the criminal justice system who are currently able to proceed. But then our civil commitment statutes, that we are up 42.1% in civil commitment filings just in the last year. So I think mental health continues to be one of the big topics that OJD and behavioral health, even before they're dealing with it in the criminal justice system, I expect that these numbers are going to continue to rise.
So the Deschutes Recovery Center, I know it was a commitment. It kind of went online when I got the problem. That was years ago, but sort of right before that, someone needed to build that. And I, and I think I remember as it started, you know, 17 beds there right now, it was like, okay, well, this is for people possibly outside of Deschutes County, referring to eastern Oregon a little bit more. So, you know, maybe if we need to be looking at that with our partners across eastern Oregon, you know, where else could we be advocating for another facility like that? Cause there's needs all over the place.
And we are sending our defendants to community placements outside of Deschutes County as well, which is also creating some pushback too. Yeah.
But it's, it's kind of looking at the state level. Where's the next place prime drawing? Cause that will help the whole system.
But the really good news is Senator Wyden is looking at that rule. It's from 1963, limiting the beds to 16. That's been bugging me for like four years. He is actually meeting and in fact, I left calls with his office yesterday. If we can get that rule bumped up so you can build a hospital with like 80 beds or something, it would make such a difference. And he's very well aware of it. Gina Nichols, who's our associate director, executive director for ALC is back in DC a lot, working on this issue. So yeah, the rule was from 1963, the 16 beds and it needs to be changed.
And you know, a little bit more than a year ago, we were at a place where the state had allocated some millions of dollars of funding that was being held by our behavioral health division and best care, you know, we all know very well from the substance use disorder treatment and but but in this case, best care was willing to work with us on a secure residential treatment facility. And then it all just fell apart. So I, to the best of my knowledge, that behavioral health is still holding those couple of million dollars for this purpose, but finding someone to, 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 to secure the additional funding, build and operate is, is a missing piece. Which certainly Holly, Holly Harris are being called, or Jasmine. So they're acutely aware of. And I, I keep asking them whether there's something that we can do to be helpful, to, to, to move that along, but it's without, without that entity that's, that's to step forward to who's willing to, to build and operate it. We're, you know, you can only, you can only it's like pushing a string. You can only do, do so much by pushing a string. So I, you know, I, I that's not, I, I know that's not helpful, but that's just kind of in the background of some of what's happening. And I, I wish there was something that we could do. And if you have ideas, we, we would welcome, you know, we would welcome your input on, on how we, how we break this impasse that we had before.
Or we might go back to the funding package that was for the Deschutes Recovery Center, figure out who the players were there. Cause I think once again, I think some of the, you know, general fund and it was debt associated with it before my time now that the county ended up bringing a pretty good check in, providing that arsenal there. So to say, maybe just putting a model together and figure out what the next step would be.
Oh, and I should also add county and is the county and some other entity provided $100,000 piece. Oh, St. Charles. So we actually are really lucky in this county. We just have a local nonprofit that was created called COGAP. Central Oregon Guardians Association. We donated to them.
We did that right here in this room.
Well, and what I will tell you is their impact already being seen in court. We had three cases come back with really, really serious dangerous charges and attempted murder and assault too. And a guy who was DD Services, so he was 20 issues old, but he had extreme DD issues. He was being held in the jail for about six months, six months, and they got involved and had these people from the day they got involved within 48 hours had resolved the issue with them being stuck in the criminal justice system. So they've already made a huge impact. So
Yeah, return. So great returns on them.
They were able to connect those people with guardians.
Correct. So one of them was an attempted murder. He was going to be released back into the community because he was never able. So the statute says if they're deemed never able, the court's required to dismiss their case. He didn't have housing because he had pretty extreme dementia and there was no one stepping up to so he didn't qualify for any other guardianship. Well, he didn't qualify for extreme risk. And then they came in, created the guardianship. They are the guardian and got him placed within 24 hours.
And would those people have been would they probably have ended up being aid and assists, classified as aid and assist?
So he was on the aid and assist. He went to the Oregon State Hospital. He'd been in custody or at the Oregon State Hospital for about two years. And then the state hospital made a finding that he was never able, able, able to aid and assist. So then he comes back to Deschutes County Jail and the statute requires me to dismiss his case unless I can make a finding that there is some probability that he can be found able. So his criminal cases get dismissed and he gets released back into the community.
Great to hear about the, the impact of COGAP.
Yeah, very, very serious impact.
Any other aspects of this topic?
Well, I just wanted to note that you probably know that this is a huge travel statewide. All of our data is showing that since Judge Mossman's order, there is a significant increase in the number of people cycling back into the criminal justice system following release because we don't have those local placements. And so I really appreciate the efforts that have been made. And I think it's one where, when we talk to OHA, and I talk to Gina Nichol a lot too, you know, I think we're all advocating for those local dollars and for the people who can be the experts to run those facilities. It's a particularly difficult population. A lot of entities have reluctance to work with this population, the justice involved, or the likely to be justice involved. So it probably will take special efforts and continuing efforts, but it's great to hear that you have some models that are working. Yeah, and it's hard to find placement when they have justice involved, especially if they have assault. Then even if they qualify for some placement, they're not accepting them because they have this violent background, but the violent background is linked to the mental health. But they've stabilized at the Oregon State Hospital, but the places won't still take them. It's, it's very difficult.
That, that does remind me, so one of the things that Janice has, has mentioned in the past is, you know, there, there, there is open space at Deer Ridge Correctional Facility. You know, we, there's been all kinds of discussions about whether that could be used to, you know, as, as homeless shelter or something like that, which I'm not personally supportive of, but Janice has, has, I expressed that there are, there might be mandated populations who you know, may be potentially violent. You could set up a small unit, maybe for a couple, like two, three, four people in some of that available space at Jennifer Ridge. Does that sound what?
I mean, Deer Ridge, Jennifer Ridge.
I'm sorry, Deer Ridge. I'm sorry, was I saying Jennifer Ridge this long time?
Well, you did say Deer Ridge. Yeah, then you said Jennifer. I knew what you meant.
Deer Ridge, I mean, would that potentially be valuable to have? I mean, it's not, well, maybe that is classified as a secure residential treatment facility, but I mean, would it be, would it be valuable to have, you know, potentially, you know, some of the people on the more dangerous or violent end of the, of the continuum in, in, in these special populations?
I think that's a really interesting question because I just did a case, he had an assault too, and he was then gonna be, they were looking at an extreme risk placement. So he cycled from the Oregon State Hospital back to the jail. And it's the differential in the setting that really made a difference in his. So he stayed on his medication. They, our jail was able to give him his treatment exactly like he was getting at the Oregon State Hospital. He's still decompensated in the jail setting, even with them providing the resources that he was getting. And so he got surrounded back to the Oregon State Hospital while he was awaiting his hearing, and he improved. So I, the setting matters, I think. So they have to be really thoughtful about how that was set up, I think.
Deer Ridge is actually quite, it's, was the nicest prison according to my conversations with Collette Peters. I mean, it's got beautiful land around it. I've been there a couple of times. They actually have an amazing program there with welding for the inmates. They have twelve inmates through COCC that will get out in a year with certification. They can make forty to sixty dollars an hour. And so just met with COCC the other day to see if we can double that program for people so they don't, you know, go back to their ways of crime. They can actually, and the inmates I'm talking to, I'm going like, you can actually change your lives with the decisions you're making. So if they can double that program, somebody else wanted to add more education there, but there are so many buildings there that are not being used. Now, Rob Pearson from the State Corrections just did call me and say, Mrs. Adair, we really can't use your idea. The governor's saying that she wants to keep it in case something burns, that we have this half empty jail. But it's, it's actually, it is really a lovely location. And, you know, what they're doing with all the programs, you want to bring in welding, if we can bring in electrical, more welding, electrical plumbing, and then some educational things for people. In fact, I know a volunteer that wants to go and help people with her life skills so that when they leave, they're they can go, go to the right instead of the left. Like I just heard from Best Care today, Rick Trafan told me, he'd had seventeen people overdose this year. They had only lost one person before of their patients, you know, for years and years and years. This year, he said, he lost three patients in one week. And it's just horrific. People that get out of the jail and they go to the, they should go to the left to their parole meeting, and they go to the right and get it yet, and, and it's killing them. So the federal is so bad. So anyway, it's just one of the complications. But he is incredibly upset. And then, of course, we've got the burn money. Ideal options is here, and they're willing to have anybody that wants help to come in there. Law enforcement can drop them off right then, and they're, they're open four days a week, ten hour days. They're in band and revened. So they run it, actually a really good program, and they're saying if they can get someone to consider getting off of drugs, if they can have seven injections, some people that will actually keep them off drugs for thirty nine months. Those, you know, it's like two, and then it's one a month. And some, you know, it's, it has some great potential for helping turn safe people's lives. So I mean, we're real, it's a, it's an epidemic right now.
Well, I'm sitting by the treatment court recently now, so there's much to share. In fact, so District Attorney Donald's mentioned it the other night, that is the gold standard for helping people. But, you know, it is with sanctions that are being, you know, driving people to this, to this court, you know, to the, get involved with this treatment court. So yeah, anybody want to speak about that? What can we do now? You know, what's the next step to bring it back or advocate for something?
Well, thank you. I'm the judge who was presiding over the treatment court, and I can speak to the success of the program. And, you know, seventy percent of the law are granted. People participated in the program at some point, graduated from the program. So, you know, what I tell everyone is that it is service intensive and treatment intensive. And so, you know, part of the understanding, I think folks need to have with treatment court, it's not just substance use disorder treatment. That is what the primary issue is when they come into what you call a drug court or treatment court. But they may have co-occurring disorders, mental health disorders, and he's treated along with the substance use disorder. And the treatment provider would, in fact, figure out which one to treat first, or how to treat both of them at the same time. And then they also receive services for their criminogenic thinking. So there is a model for how to change the way they treat, they think so that you can introduce them back into society doing the things that are pro-social, as opposed to the antisocial way they, they think. In addition to that, there are services that we provide with regards to, you know, to address socioeconomic needs. So they may need housing, they need employment, they need education, they need childcare, and they need peer mentoring. These are all the resources and services that Treatment Court provides. So holistically, that's why the program works, is because we're trying to address their needs and the risks that they bring into the court. And Drug Court addresses the needs for high-risk, high-meets people. And high, high-risk generally means that they're they're, they're likely to fail on supervision. And so that's why they're always in jail, because they're constantly failing because of what their needs are. And that's why they're failing on supervision. And so we try to address all of those needs to break that cycle. And so in order to do that, we get all our partners together. So you need the district attorney's office on board, you need the sheriff's office on board, you need a treatment provider who is either capable of addressing the substance use disorder that's underlying it. And if there's a co-occurring disorder, a mental health provider, if the treatment provider can't do that. So some treatment providers do address mental health as well as the substance use, and they don't, they have to have a separate provider to do that as well. Otherwise, we can't even take them into Treatment Court because we can't address their needs. And so we also then have to have probation involved, right? Because we have to have supervision. And so we have to have peer mentors involved. And, you know, we were fortunate to have all of those services in place, and at times we had more than that because we had, for example, CASA. We have a lot of our, when the Treatment Court was initially set up as Drug Court, was it initially set up as a family drug court? And so a lot of those people had dependency cases that were also addressed. And so DHS was involved, CASA was involved, and DHS and CASA really important resources because they know kind of services that are important in that setting, and they provide that. And I know DHS started to struggle with their ability to provide resources to stay in Treatment Court. They fell off towards the end of our Treatment Court, which was unfortunate. CASA remained involved for a long time. CASA is important because they get involved with our children in Treatment Court, and they do the visits and that, that kind of component. We had other attorneys who also, apart from the criminal aspect of it, provided services to allow for custody and parenting plans to be put in place, which is awesome. We had an independent person foundation, Choose Joy Foundation also supported the families. So we had lots of resources available to us to help. A major thing that hit us, obviously, we lost our treatment provider, I mean, our treatment coordinator first. Technically, we, we kind of lost our treatment provider, and then, but they hung on, kind of continued to provide services. And at one point, we lost that treatment provider entirely. And then we, in the midst of that, we lost our treatment coordinator, Treatment Court coordinator. This program can't run without a treatment coordinator. Because they're the ones that kind of pull everything together, allows for case management, which is crucial to our court. Without case management, which is planning and identifying the needs of, of individuals, this really doesn't work. And proper case management is essential. And otherwise, you're just basically closing your eyes and throwing darts and hoping to hit the right spot. And so that, in conjunction with the treatment provider and proper case management, is kind of what makes this thing kind of works. And on top of that, there is a, Treatment Court is a shift. The way, the model is a shift from how we do traditional court. Right? And so a lot of folks come in with the idea, even our providers, initially with the idea that you give someone a chance, and there's so many chances that you give someone to be successful. Treatment Court is not that. Treatment Court dispenses for that model, and regardless of how many times you mess up, as long as you're willing to engage in treatment and do the work, we're going to work with you until you fix the problem or we have more resources. So the emphasis is on us to kind of help and give the folks, figure out what the needs are and resolve it and get the people to where they need to be. That's a very different model shift from where, from a punitive model, where if you do what you do, you're good. If you don't do what you do, you're going to jail. This requires training for all of our staff and a commitment for all of our providers and staff to engage in that kind of treatment. NADCP, that's the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, does provide training annually, and our court has, have, have provided some training as well. And it also requires that commitment from our staff and providers to be involved in that. And it's not a one-time thing, it's ongoing. So that, and this is a lot, so this is why.
What's the future? Are we going to be able to bring something back around?
Well.
And, and I say we, you know, what are, what resources are needed?
So these are the resources that we need, right? And so.
So the coordinator, who pays for the coordinator?
So I think Angie can speak to.
The funding was provided from a grant through the Criminal Justice Division. So the primary part of the grant is community corrections. And then the part for the coordinators, the model for the grant evolved over time, and most recently, there was a single grant application, and then the funding for the coordinator came through OJD. And then the remainder of the funding predominantly went to community correction through grants. And so the grant, our most recent grant did end on June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
One of the challenges with hiring coordinators through a grant cycle is that you have to post the position in a limited duration position. And particularly in a place like that, when you post a building that's very high, you know, this can be very hard to get people to commit to those kinds of jobs when they don't know at the end of that cycle whether or not they're going to have a job. And so that's a conversation we're having with legislators. And, you know, we're, we're hoping we may have some solutions to that problem. That's something we can do from, from our side on the state level, and so we are engaging and, and we'll do everything we can to try to help in that regard.
And I, you know, I think Commissioner Chang raised a good point. I think one of the things that, you know, our court can commit to is looking at what happened, you know, with this drug court. You know, we didn't kill a drug court, it died, and for a reason. And we can look at those reasons and say, okay, you know, and the questions that I have is, number one, does it need to live in the court? Because it's incredibly resource intensive. So really looking at it and just saying, hey, we know that we have to provide these services. These services are critical in our community, but what can that look like? And, and I think, and it starts with, okay, what did we have? How did it shape shift over the years? You know, we had declining enrollment, and it wasn't all, you know, I described it as death by a thousand cuts. It certainly wasn't for lack of effort by Judge Crutchley. I don't think you could have a better, a judge who is really wedded to the fidelity of, you know, if you, if you want a real treatment court, you have to follow the model. Or, or you're just putting up just window dressing. It just looks pretty for the community, can really harm people. So I think we can have that community conversation, just say, here's what we know we need in our community. It's probably something that's needed in Oregon, right? This is not just either, you know, there's a treatment issue, there's a drug problem in Deschutes County, don't go there, you know, go to, go to another county where there's no drug problem, right? That's, that rule had sailed a long, long time ago. And what did we have? And how did, how did we end up at this place Monday where we had the, you know, the last two graduates? And what would that resource look like? And then what would the court's role, if any, be in that, in that? So are you suggesting that instead of having a, having a model where the circuit court is, is the coordinator of the process as well as, you know, providing, you know, the, the judge and, and, you know, all of the structure that comes with, you know, with, with court procedures and legal procedures? It, it could possibly be coordinated somewhere else with the, the circuit court, still providing the judge and the kind of procedural framework, but someone else making sure that this whole bundle of other services to address co-occurring concerns, someone else is making sure that all that happens. Is that? I, I think it, I think it should be explored. You know, we, we look at veterans intervention strategies, which came out of the district attorney's office, which was highly successful, and we call it a court-connected program. It is not a court program, it's a DA's program with a court component, and it's worked very well. Judge Miller.
Might speak that briefly. I was thinking about that as I was listening to this. And some, I guess, no particular word, but, you know, that's been out now for about, it's just less than a year, maybe about a year. It is, from our perspective, but of course, very nimble. I pick about two hours of time, maybe to two and a half a month from, for bench time, literally on the bench, and it might be an extra half an hour, or really fifteen minutes to twenty minutes in meeting with the team before I go take the bench. That's very different than Judge Crutchley's family drug court for very different reasons. This is court-connected, it is managed by the DA's office. They invited us to be a part of it. To add, I think, some profit, I guess I'd say credibility to decision-making. Allow the judge to make decisions and have the DA make the decisions after they've entered the program. They were doing that before, but with our partnership and. That, they were doing that before, uh but with our partnership and an agree agreement to be a part of this program. They've expanded the number of participants. And so these are people that, uh, these are veterans that have, uh, uh, they found their way in through having contact with law enforcement. They face a a charge or two. Uh, they enter a plea, they admit to the crime, and they enter into the program, Veterans Intervention Strategies Program. And they're sentenced. And then the program is the sentence. Um, that's different, for example, than a DVD SP where they enter a plea. They may never get sentenced. And the court I'm a part of, uh, in this program, they're sentenced. And the judge, all of a sudden, uh meets with them every couple of weeks, maybe once a month, depending on the schedule, and it's a handful, and then they rotate. We've got about seventeen, eighteen applicants right now, one of undecided. Or not undecided, he wants to come in, but actually, that's part of it. They're they're uh, they're looking at his background to decide if he's eligible. Uh, and they come in and uh my role is, is I I see them in court. I make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, so what does that look like? Unlike Judge Crutchley, uh, I have uh, you've got the Vet Center, you've got uh veteran mentors. Uh, there are rules around this program that they can speak to mentors, mentors don't have to share what they said and so on and so forth. Uh, it's a different kind of program. Uh, and again, I should have mentioned it. It's not apparent. If I didn't say it, should have. To be eligible, you have to serve in the military, has to be an eligible crime, meaning not your most serious crimes. Uh, it has to, uh, their issue, their service-connected issue has to relate to the crime that they've committed. So it has to be this nexus. Uh, there's lots of people that serve in the military that committed a crime and the two don't have anything to do with each other, okay? But I would say from a resource perspective, it's really no more than what I just described. I'm honored to be a part of it. I'm amazed by it. I'm I'm humbled by the participants. But it doesn't take more than that from the court's perspective. The Vet Center steps in. We've got a BA and uh at Klamath, uh, they're all participating. No one, no one's getting paid that that isn't, that wasn't already getting paid. Uh, and it it's a very flexible and nimble program that allows the court to be involved in a way. I would dare say that maybe you you wouldn't be able to 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 be involved in if you were in a formal veterans treatment court. So it was a no-brainer for us to get involved and uh for me to be involved. Uh, but I'm really not doing, to be fair, uh, it's the DA's office, the defense bar. The veterans and and all those veteran lawyers, veterans, they're they're all doing the work. And my decisions at the end of the day come down to, uh, uh, do you, uh, do you stay in the, did you do what you're supposed to do while, you know, you're you're on these two tracks as a part of your sentence or not? And then I would say there's similarities. Uh, we work very hard, uh, or at least think very hard about encouraging them. It's not a lot of work, but at least not yet. Judge Crutchley, it's only been in there for a year, but uh, to keep them going and encourage them to be successful. That's, that's two different, totally different programs. Ones, it just doesn't require a lot of us as as a judge to be involved in this. But what I appreciate about what Judge Ashby was pointing out is that uh he said we should explore different options related to what was the Family Drug Court. If the resources are not necessarily there or if they're not there yet. There may be ways to be nimble and to have other partners that do a lot of the work. Uh, I I certainly won't speak to that. Judge Crutchley probably has some ideas on on this. He's been doing this forever and uh uh, and I don't know what you know. And uh, and I'm just learning about what I'm doing. But but I like the idea of being open-minded about how you might accomplish some goals, uh, rather than have an all or nothing. I think that's important. So anyway, that's.
And and I raise it not because, um, you know, hey, how can the court get out of work? It's really quite the opposite. We just have so many people who need access to justice. We have a family dependency, we have uh a family law criminal probate, juvenile. And and so it's, you know, every time, you know, we make a decision, we do this. Um, we're we're not doing something else. So it's just, I'm just saying, like, he was seven, real broad look at this and see what what the court's role can and should be.
And there are, I mean, you know, within, within, within the county family, there are a number of agencies that have a vested interest in having this kind of a a pathway or a track available to to people who aren't involved with the criminal justice system and have, you know, substance use disorder challenges. You know, community justice, behavioral health being immediate to that that come to mind. So which then, you know, led me to the, uh, so how do we pay for that question? Um, and I I do think, you know, part of the reason I I'm I'm particularly interested in the, in in this question, these issues right now is because there is so much, uh, there's so much discussion of Measure 110 reform. Uh, that kind of bubbling up right now, I I think it's gonna be a really central focus of the the short legislative session and for us to be able to 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 explain to people, you know, this is what adult treatment court is or was. And this is why we're, you know, why in Shute County it worked so well. Because I am getting the impressions, speaking to other county commissioners, that it doesn't actually work well in all counties. Um, and and you know, that's, that's a, that's a credit to all of you, you know, you know, have this high fidelity program that 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 delivered the model in an effective way. Uh, but you know, well, what does it do? Why did it work here? And um, you know, what resources are needed um to to support this this service? And you know, maybe there could be a fourth piece to 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 that, which is, I don't know, what are, what are some potentially slightly different models or structures um to to offer it? And I think if we can do that, if we can put that, put that in writing, you know, in a case study, in a white paper or something like that, that that's an incredibly valuable thing to contribute to the statewide discussions of, you know, Measure 110 reform right now. Um, the the idea came up to 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 ask, uh, you know, from Counselor Broadman to 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 I um asked the lipsick to to somehow be involved in producing that that paper. Um, and I I don't know whether that's, you know, I've only sat on the lipsick for a short period of time. Um, if some of you who've been more involved with it for longer can can tell me whether that that seems like a good idea or not. But um, I get somehow producing this white paper, I think would be uh, I I do think would be an incredibly valuable thing to contribute to the discussions, the policy discussions that are happening right now.
But I think, I think Lipsick's a great ecosystem to, you know, bring that up and discuss that, maybe come up with a plan to execute that.
Um, one thing that Judge Crutchley brought up was CASA. And Heather Dion just gave a presentation this afternoon, how timely, at my Health Council meeting. She actually said in central Oregon, we have an eighty-five percent um relationship with CASAs and which is normally state average is fifty percent. So uh, I told her to please come again to the county and do her presentation so we can bring more volunteers. But the fact that they're at eighty-five percent is really so significant. I think she does such a great, great job. Um, you know, clearly, those those children need someone that's gonna really be their advocate. Someone apparently served for ten years with one um, one child that just, the case just went on and on. And that that CASA person stayed with them. So just think what kind of continuity it gave to that. Um, you know, to give to that person that really gave them more hope, that there's really somebody that really cares. And then the other person is Heather Doherty, who ran Yamhill's um drug court problem. And she, um, uh, let's see, Ideal Options just hired her away from Yamhill a couple uh weeks ago. But she has two daughters that live here in Bed, twenty-year-old daughters. And so when I met her at the other day at Ideal Options Two, she is, um, you know, nationally certified and everything. Uh, you know, I don't know if that's somebody that we could bring in um to help if we could ever pull our program back together again or not. But she definitely had um the expertise and she has two kids here. So that, you know, could be a win-win, right? Like, I'm sure Josh would be, um, not happy with me, but she was, um, it was great to get to meet her and think that she made that special trip over. So, yeah.
One of the other things I'll I'll say addressing subjects that Commissioner Chang brought out was the cost of treatment. And so it's not just getting our folks into treatment. The providers actually are committing to doing extra work. And this is why I think Judge is asking for a different model. Because part of what adult treatment requires, as part of their program is that there'll be um team meetings and case management meetings. So your treatment providers show up outside of their facilities. They come to court and they provide, they participate in team meetings and participate in case management. It's time consult. And so they have to have a commitment and get paid to do this. And right now, I think the message is, why do we commit to doing this when we make as much money just doing what we're doing? So that has to be fixed, right? So they, they, they don't necessarily want to take additional time to come to court, to meet with a team, case plan, case management, report. That's extra for them.
Yeah, bell blowers plus.
Right.
Plus.
Right.
One of the, one of the reasons I I think it's really great to bring the, you know, to kind of with these kinds of treatment courts front and center during the Measure 110 reform discussions is there is a, you know, Measure 110 has deployed a substantial amount of funding for treatment in the past. And that hasn't been going to treatment courts, as far as I understand, you know, that's not something that uh, the money that's flowing through the PHRNs is is going to. So I mean, I think that there's an opportunity, if we, if we really understand what the resources are that are needed um, to uh, you know, run a robust, successful uh treatment court, then we can be asking for that at this, at this moment while people are looking under the hood of Measure 110.
I think that's, I have that understanding, I have that understanding. They never carved out anything specific for treatment courts of Measure 110. Treatment providers, I think, could write something up on their own. But it it was never a carve-out specifically for a treatment court.
Right. I think there are some pretty active discussions on this topic happening now in the legislature. So we'll see.
Yeah. And then if the, if the the program is coordinated from outside of the circuit court, then, you know, maybe that makes it easier to um, frame it as a treatment option that you know, is closer to what they're funding under Measure 110 currently, and I, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, this let, this short session will be real important to get up to speed. Being able to communicate about this as it's happening will be valuable. Probably moving on a little bit here. So sure.
Public Defense Services, I'll give a quick breakdown. We have, it would seem one person in custody uh, who is unrepresented but would otherwise be held. Um, and we do have a plan for representation. We should have more information in about a week. Um, and then we have one person out of custody, currently unrepresented as a result of you know, coming back on a post-conviction leave. So that's the, that's the good news. Um, what I would say is, you know, I I think, you know, we have had conversations really often um, with the District Attorney's Office, with all of our public defense service providers. We are, you know, blessed to work with um public defense service providers who uh, you know, kind of follow what I think is the central Oregon way of collaboration. They they are leveraging this moment to get anything for them. They are are always just saying, how can we help? And so typically in the room is our district attorney. Um, all of our defense service providers, you know, obviously the court, our court administrator. And we just say, what do we need to do, um, you know, to to make this work? And so on the court side, we've made a lot of changes in our business practices. They just said, hey, if you do this, or if you extend this timeline, or we don't have to file a motion for something we're setting over a week. And we're looking at ways to reduce our case down. We're looking at ways to make the work that we do more efficient for them. A lot of that includes staying remote, so they can work at their desk and play here, their case called, they can jump in. You know, little things like not having to walk to the courtroom in the courthouse. So, you know, that collaboration, perhaps been a part of that. We, you know, uh, family, uh, family leave, the Oregon Family Leave Act is, um, you know, is is great and it's important. And it also, you know, pulls a few attorneys offline every now and then. Um, hiring has, there have been some hiring successes, which is really encouraging because, um, you know, everybody is, um, it's like, you know, uh, bring your own home. It's very, very difficult for people to uh move here, especially new attorneys who you want to attract to, you know, public defense. And so, you know, hearing those hiring successes is fantastic, but I I'm not gonna um, and we have a fantastic, um, Becky Williams, who does all of our um, public defense connection between people who need a lawyer and uh qualify, uh, she's just a rock star. She's fantastic. I can't, I can't, Angie can speak to it, but she puts in so much extra work. I met with her right before this meeting to just say, you know, where are we at and where are we at in real time and what hearings we need to set? Uh, she's, she's great. So we have a really good, I would say, um, local team in collaboration. Uh, but man, it is, it is week to week. And every time I see her, she's like, you know, I'll get this email, like, hey, do you have five minutes? Or something came up, I'm just like, oh, that's Becky. Where will she not find me in the building? Um, but we, you know, we've managed to work through it, but it is, it is skinny. It's tight. So, yeah, that's the best, that's the update.
So legislative sessions, we're we're part of the legislative session.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the other thing too is, you know, everybody, all of our groups, Bend Attorney Group, um, Issues Defenders and Atlas Law Group all successfully went through the contract process. So just received those, um, emails the other day. So you know, that's, that's great. I know that there has been some, you know, resource committed to that, but uh, you can't, you can't manufacture, you know, attorneys and you can't just, you know, say, okay, I was gonna go back to like two hundred and fifty thousand to put you into a home and van, right? Those are, those are tough things that everybody
Yeah.
in our community faces, small business and government, everybody.
Well, there's some big UTP expansions have been. There's uh land available, applied, rednecks, building houses still. So uh, we're, we are very tight path for housing right now.
Right.
Any questions about public defense? It doesn't sound like, uh, we're in as bad a shape as, um, communities are around the state.
I'll, I'll take our current situation and.
But I would say that even the counties that are just at the edge, like I said, Shute probably is. It's just, it's one retiring attorney, one attorney making town, and they totally, that's it. You know, nobody is better off than that in a lot of counties.
Right? It's, it's that skinny.
It's, it's that skinny, yeah. But there, I mean, the legislature did devote a lot of money and um, through a lot of efforts from all, all, all kinds of sources to really root. There's been success in adding, I mean, they're, they're not necessarily everywhere you need them, but there's, um, like, there, there are more attorneys on contract this year than there were last year. And that's continued to grow a little bit, but they're slowing, slowing off.
I think the one other thing we're seeing is people are starting to stabilize now because just a year ago, people were just kind of just bopping around, you know, leaving uh jobs and moving around, demanding more money. I'm gonna leave this so I can get more money there, which is fine, but I think it's just starting to stabilize. We saw this at nine-one-one floor, twenty-four hour operations. We couldn't get the next half a dozen people in there, no matter what we did. But all of a sudden, you know, staffing levels are stabilizing. Uh, Health Department and Sheriff's Officer both like that too. There's just constant openings. But I think we're starting to see it stabilize. Hopefully it can build on that. Because last year we were going backwards as fast as we were trying to.
That's just a court updates. I don't know, yeah, we, we have some real quick court updates, um. Judge Kretschle, you want to talk really quickly about the, uh, DEI committee?
Oh, yes, so we formed a DEI committee, uh, court back in April. And so we've had now, um, so several, um, meetings together to kind of get up, get up to speed. One of the, we've had numerous community members um, who helped to facilitate and, well, of course, staff. And, uh, we asked them, we got together finally, um, to kind of address some of the things that we think, um, the court needs to address. We'll be, uh, getting together on the twenty-third of this month to, uh, kind of work through some of those things. Uh, and we just wanted to make recommendations to the presiding judge and to the trial court administrator. And also to contemplate what kind of work that, uh, the community could do as well as assist. So I'm excited about it. I think, you know, lots of good things can come out. One of the things that, that is that we also did strategic planning work group, um, a couple of weeks ago. And a number of those things that came up in our strategic planning work group, I also think that, uh, came up in our DEI, uh, work session. So I think, you know, those are aligning and it's really nice to see them. I'm excited about, um, what can we do to do that. And it's about, at this point, sixteen folks that are on it at this point. Obviously, you could have more people on it, um, and there are a couple of groups I think that we would like to see on it that are not represented right now. We have reached out to them hopefully in the future. We would also, having a committee like this also presents a certain amount of, um, issues with regards to how big it can be because at a certain level it becomes obvious. And so that's, you know, that's the other, I think we need to control that. It's a DEI company, so I want to help the rest, yeah, create inclusion. So that's, that's, you know, that's what we need to do.
Perfect, thank you. Angie, can you talk a little bit about case clearance rates?
Yes, I'll keep this brief, but, um, I know there's a lot of advocacy, um, in partnership with the county to get our two additional judicial positions. And just wanted to share a little bit about the fruit of that effort. In addition to having Judge McKeever, Judge Harriet join the bench, which is wonderful. And we're also seeing a case resolution. So we talked about the COVID backlog and Hues County continued to be pretty assertive about resolving cases even throughout the pandemic. But as of July, our, we were clearing, um, closing more cases than were filed in every case type except civil. And that was because our civil filings had increased by twenty-one percent over the year prior. So it wasn't that we weren't closing cases, we actually closed, for example, sixteen percent more cases than civil cases than the year prior, but the filings were up. So those two additional judicial positions, the two additional doctors we created are allowing us to, um, resolve cases and address any backlog we may have developed during that pandemic.
Right. And one of, one of the things that was really helpful is, you know, for at least a decade, you know, we were just, uh, under resourced and we couldn't look at data with any confidence and say, okay, you know, here's where we're strong, here's where we're weak. Um, and, and develop priorities. What we knew and what we did was we knew the case in front of us needed to be handled. And so it was fairly reactive. And, you know, we had an analyst, uh, who went through, nearly completed data, cleaned up thousands of pages. So we could really gain that confidence in that data and make decisions about, um, hey, not just saying like, boy, those, you know, those numbers are really pretty, but boy, those are, those numbers are kind of spooky. And we need to do better and we can look at our business process and, and also, uh, you know, one of the things we're gonna do here in the next week or so is put together a work group, you know, we want to, uh, take this construction time as an opportunity to explore, uh, better and different ways to kind of experiment with how we're, uh, gonna do our work, you know, our footprint's gonna shrink even more. So it's like, how do we continue to serve our community, not expand the security footprint and cost for the county? By saying like, hey, you know, please, this is a beautiful building, let's try to use this space and get creative, better work. And then when we come out of the construction, just say, what did we like, what worked, what didn't work, what do we want to keep? And, you know, what was fun to kind of try, but let's put it, put it back on the rack. So, uh, that's kind of the quick thing. I'm not sure if any, any judges want to talk about some things that are kind of going on in the courts, some updates.
Now, the, the, one thing I would say, now circle back to treatment court. And, uh, Commissioner Deonai has spoken about this, is there's always been a need for an inpatient treatment program back here. So you're working as a base treatment court. And the reason why that's important and critical is because under the treatment court model, you're not supposed to put people in jail. You have substance use disorder. And part of that also relates to the criminogenic thinking, that when you take, trying to treat those issues, you put them in jail, they meet people who are also high-risk and have criminogenic thinking. And what the model tells you is that if you put high-risk people or low-risk people with high-risk people, they make them high-risk people. But if you've got high-risk people, dealing with high-risk people, they continue to be high-risk people. And so, and it doesn't, and so one of the things that, at times occurs is get someone who is initially in the program, who is suffering from some substance use disorder and will not stop using. And so one of the things that treatment courts do, or courts do, is put them in jail to, and to get them to stop. There are two things that are problematic with it. One, um, in, in putting them in jail, um, I address that in terms of meeting other pros and doing that. But the other part of it is, in jail, it takes about forty-five days for a person, is what they tell you. To kind of begin to change, their physiology begins to change to get weaned off and have their, um, their thinking begin to change. And so it's not the right way to treat someone in treatment court, put them in jail for forty-five days if you're a treatment program, right? And so that's why the, the need is there for an actual treatment, inpatient treatment program to address those issues. So it's been a longstanding issue. Um, I've had this conversation, I think, with Commissioner Deonai, I think, with Commissioner Chan as well. And so that's one of the critical parts, I think, of any, um, treatment program is finding. And we've had to find ways to, creative ways to deal with people coming in who's had these issues. And try to address their impatience other than trying to put them in jail or substantially out of time to get them to stop using.
Got your thoughts, Commissioner. I'm just like, the whole crew is here now, is that correct?
Yes.
All judges, so thank you very much. No, it's exciting having everybody together.
I was gonna mention, um, based on Judge Kretschle's, you know, thinking is, um, one of the trainings I went to recently, so I was just in a shelter hearing for the parents' court. And, uh, I went to a training recently and one of the technical assistance opportunities that's provided through the National Council of Juvenile Family Court Judges is service mapping. So they provide free technical assistance on service mapping for the community. And so that's, um, my next event horizon on impeachment neglect cases is to connect with them and request help assistance so that we have a specific service map because it's problematic. And I think what Judge Kretschle's run into in, in his, his court, I mean, Depends Court is really a specialty court. It's, it's kind of run like a specialty court, it's just a kind of a subset of all the stuff that we do. But, um, really what we run into is, is really a significant deficit in services available to assist our parents. And so, you know, historically, Oregon has a really very, very high removal rate of children as opposed to maintaining in-home placements or having, you know, some sort of safety service provision. Um, we're making a lot of progress, uh, with, with, I guess, diminishing the number of removals. But the problem with that is, is the services available to meet children safely in home. And we were, our filings were down until this last month. And we've had a significant number of, uh, fentanyl-addicted infants born within the last sixty days. Um, and so in terms of service provision for, uh, pregnant and parenting, uh, families that are substance use affected, uh, that's a significant problem. You know, and we're seeing the babies, you know, like, I think we have at this point, in the last, last two months, we have like, I think, five babies in care right out the gates that were born, um, positive fentanyl. Um, and, and what's being reported from medical professionals is like the, the withdrawals are so much more painful that the kiddos are in need here for longer, uh, with greater administration of pain medication. The disorder of eating and feeding, like, like much more than has been historically, right? Um, and then the problem with maintaining in-home is safety provisions around fentanyl. Um, and what a lot of professionals will be reporting in court, which is found to be true, um, is that it's lethal through, you know, hand-to-hand contact even. And so retaining safety in home of an infant or a small child, when there's active fentanyl use is really, really challenging. So all this to say is, that is something I want to look at, is service mapping to our families. Because even in cases where you don't have significant substance use involvement presenting in, in court, you have a ton of other, uh, problems, you know, vocational skill building, housing, um, employment, and like, really, it's just the opportunity to teach people life skills. And those aren't oftentimes a jurisdictional basis, but it's oftentimes a significant deficit in their ability to access services or even figure out what it means to be referred to a service even if the service existed. So like, and we had Dawn's house, uh, closed recently, um, for various reasons. You know, we have one pregnant parenting, um, shelter housing, grandma's house. You know, like, if, if we can really look at opportunities for safe and stable sober living, that would go a very long way to help the families that we're seeing, um, crossing over with court in so many different case types. And one of the major roles that the juvenile analyst plays is, is scooping up all of the co-occurring cases for these families, right? Like, you'll have their criminal case, their FAPA case, there's always sometimes a stalking case, plus their domestic relations case, plus their juvenile case. Right? And so it's like, if you look at resource investment on these types of families, it's significant because they're crossing over all of these different patterns of behaviors, right? And so, um, from my perspective, you know, we're gonna start with the service mapping just to see what is there, how often we can update it. So that we're all in the same cage about how are we, how are we meeting the needs of these families? Um, because then after we do that, my role would be like, okay, getting together with ODHS Child Walker locally and saying, okay, how can we fill needs locally through our community service providers? Or can we come together in community and figure out how we can be thinking? Um, which I think is of interest to you guys, in terms of how this is playing out, which is the cost of medical, criminal justice, all of it, it kind of, I think, all of the rubber hits the road oftentimes in that, that zone. So just to play off of what Judge Kretschle was saying is, you know, having opportunities for local service provision would be a tremendous assistance to the families that we're seeing, so.
Some good information and there's scary information too, so thank you for sharing. Yeah, I feel like I heard the, the, about the need for two different kinds of residential treatments.
Yeah, I mean, residential treatment definitely makes me, for, you know, I think Best Care has just opened like a mom's program. If you're not familiar with that, it's fairly new emergence that I've been seeing. I'm not sure, I don't think it's residential, but it's Best Care Moms Program, don't know what that means. So I gotta look into that piece, but oftentimes like the mommy and be programs for, um, you know, infant mom co-placements are gonna be out of Clam and Falls, um, or someplace in Valley, or for indigenous families, they'll go out east. Um, so, you know, nothing really local in terms of impeachment residential or parenting, um, individuals, moms and dads. Um, and so that's, that's a huge issue. And then, of course, you know, before, having these kiddos safe and stable, sober living for, for individuals that we're, we're addressing, babies not being born without that.
And so the, the, there's a difference between inpatient residential treatment program and so, and so clean and sober housing. So for treatment court, when you come in, lots of folks they're using, and one of the requirements of the treatment court, obviously, is that you not use. But they, and lots of them may not have houses. So you need to find a place for them to, um, live clean and sober. And so they have a certain, like, uh, um, Dawn's House is one of those. Um, the, uh, Bend Recovery Hall is one of those, um, is one of those. So you have to have places to have people go where they're not. And, you know, generally they're tested in, in these facilities to make sure that they're, and they can't bring in, um, drugs into these facilities. So it would be nice to have something that we could depend on. The, the, the trouble for treatment court is at times, there may not be enough space to get Bethany in. Is a cleaner, uh, sober housing facility, folks can check into it at times. Um, and so, but it's, it would be nice to have a place where we can have people go for cleaning sober housing. Sometimes we have to be scrambling to see whether there's a bed available, you know, a place available.
So when, when you were, when you were saying, rather than, rather than, uh, putting someone in jail um, for, for that forty-five-day period, you were actually at, you, you're both talking about clean and sober living opportunities more than a residential treatment facility.
Well, no, I was really referring to at that point, uh, an inpatient residential treatment program. Because at that point, what you're getting at is people are continuing to use, uh, substances and essentially in violation of their probation, right? So, and for that purpose, they can be violated on their probation and sent to jail. Or while they're picked up on, uh, probation, they can be, for that violation, they can be sent to jail while their hearing is pending. And so if they're in treatment court, what we don't want to do is necessarily send them to jail just for using. And in fact, I tell them, I will never send you to jail just for using trials. If you've done everything else, because this is a treatment program, we do not put you in jail just for using. But if they're needing, if they're in need of treatment and they're not being honest, and we have no other option but to put them in jail, I'm saying, okay. And I've reluctantly done that, I think, once or twice, just to have a place to put them. And it's not the best thing to do by all standards for treatment court. It's not what you should be doing.
More inpatient residential.
Isn't necessary, uh, would be. Trying to address that. And one of the interesting things about jail, when people think about putting folks in jail for substance use disorder, you wouldn't think so, but they have actually maybe better access to drugs in jail than they do on the, on the street at times. So that's the other issue.
Well, I spoke to jail captain today, he says, right after they got stabilized and got the flashlights out, they did bed check real quick, nobody got out. But, uh, we're in a moment here with the power going out. Okay, well, on that note, uh, maybe we wrap up here. We've got another step to go, we'll see if we'd like to. So anything else? That's our agenda for this evening.
Thank you for, um, inviting us today. Thank you always for showing care and concern about the work that we do for justice and supporting justice in our community. It's greatly appreciated and we, we notice it. So thank you.
Thank you.
It would be upstairs at Hues Brewery, and we have the room reserved and, uh, food will be on the court. And then if you want adult beverages, those would take you on your own, but we can buy iced tea.
That's why I was a little cryptic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, problem.